Good evening and welcome to this July 17, 2017 regularly scheduled Midland Public School Board of Education meeting. At this time, if everyone would turn off their cell phones, appreciated. And if you would all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, I'll take role. President Branstad, I'm here. Vice President Singer is absent this evening. Secretary McFarland is also absent. Just Treasury for State.
Here.
All right. Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
And Member Fredell.
Here.
All right. So that is five out of seven. Excellent. Moving into item two, which is our consent agenda. Two point one is approval of the regular meeting minutes from June 26. Two point two is the following staff member who has announced her resignation. Two point three is adoption of Midland School Code Articles 105, 105(c), which is Schools of Choice. Two point four is our district's school improvement plans. Two point five is textbook approval. And two point six are legal invoices for payment. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve items two point one through two point six on the consent agenda.
Support. Okay, moved by Patrick, support by Mary. Is there any discussion?
There was the note that the agenda group realignment was to be attached to the final minutes as it states in those minutes.
Okay.
They are. They're filed with them, Brad.
They're filed with them.
That's the actual terminology we use when we make a...
Okay, so it's part of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like if we do the motion tonight for the road closure piece for Dow, it would be attached to the minutes.
Okay. I'm good.
All right. Is there any other discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. Moving into three. Three point one.
I'll take that.
Take that.
Three point one is a purchase that we're recommending tonight. It's for our district radio communication system. I guess the short story is that we have been without a repeater system for quite a while since that antenna at Midland High got hit. It really affects our communication on the northern part of the district. We also have only analog radios and we just started to switch over. So especially in light of this last winter, we had a couple situations where even cellphone reception out there is not very good, that we had a little trouble communicating, thought it was time, and we did a little trial. You can see we already purchased some for the buses. We did a trial where we put the digital ones on there and were able to, going through someone else's antenna, communicate quite well instead of the garbleness that we got before. That was a good thing. So what you're seeing here are three parts of what we hope that we bring to you over time because you can see the cost involved. We're gonna get all the buses switched over to digital radios, which is almost a must. The analog systems can't be supported much longer. You'll also see, and that's the first one, the 10 radios you'll see, that will get us up to all but 19 buses. They'll also give us a digital receiver for the base station, if you will. You'll see another 20. There are three of one type and 17 of the other. That's for our technicians, the computer technicians, and also our skilled trades, maintenance grounds. What we find with them especially, these are handheld. The three are more like supervisory and the other 17 are heavier duty, the men out in the field that are in different spots. They can be very hard to reach on any communication device we have now. Something in their vehicle doesn't make a whole lot of sense because lots of times they're someplace like a roof and we're trying to get a hold of them. And so this would bring us up to date there. And the last thing you see here is the actual repeater and tower that will bring us up to our own tower. Those three items together come to a total of $40,604.92. I guess I would add as part of the program, as we've been talking to the radio people, we'll get more details, and we mentioned this at FFO, we'd like to see this stretched also to our building level. They have communication systems that would integrate with this, multiple channels, also can hook right into 911 eventually. So this would be a plan as we go forward to try to, for our safety and security of all our students, bring that into play. With the right antenna equipment, we're not there yet, this gets us to basic communication. We could also have GPS on our buses to know where they are in a real-time situation. You can get some GPS, but it's like at five or 10-minute intervals as opposed to one-minute intervals, so you'd know exactly where they are. That we're not bringing to you right now. We need to do some more research on that, make sure that's the right product. What would also help is when we do that down the road, if you've been in any of our buildings, there's like 10 different walkie-talkie systems that everyone uses and some are good and some not so good, and we think this would standardize all that. And also if people wanted to buy more, there'd be a set model to go with that would give us that power. So what we're asking for tonight is to get our buses there, our maintenance, skilled trades, and computer technicians, and also to get our tower so we're not leasing off someone else's tower for some of it and to keep our communications to the north solid.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve item three point one.
Support.
Okay, moved by Patrick, support by Scott. Is there any discussion?
Bob, I did just look this up just briefly because I have experience with radios and these are great radios. I have no problem with the purchase. But reading into a little bit further, did they talk to you about what the cost is when we get a full-blown system put together to bring in the wave technologies so that you have full integration of all of your platforms together? So that, as an example, they showed that Superintendent Charo could actually be on his cellphone talking to a bus driver on the two-way system. And computers and all devices and all platforms be brought together so that the whole network works together.
The one part that we do know is that premium antenna system is what I'm going to tell you to start with, that has the multi-channel because if you don't get a multi-channel, you'll have the skilled trades guy talking over a playground person. So you have to have multiple channels. That cost and what we're about to spend, the 14 on the tower, almost $15,000 there as part of it, was right around $89,000. That's the biggest part of this. The rest is just how many radios do you want to work with the system? So we know that. In fact, the schools we'd look at, it's a little, it's a toned-down version, doesn't have as much on it for the people that are out of playground duty or whatever. Still communicates the same way, just wouldn't have all the features that are there. So what we know right now is that that tower would have cost if we brought it today, $89,000 minus this 15. So we know that cost. The other is talking to, and we just started talking to our principals, okay, if we had to set you up at an elementary school, what would you need? Base unit? About how many phones would you need to make that system work? So that part I know that an individual one was running 400 to 500 as opposed to these costs, but we really haven't gone any further than that. We know what the antenna system, they'll get us that interaction between everything. We know that price. And that's where we're at.
Char, we have kind of a three, four-year plan is what our goal is, get to where you're going, but until we have the antenna, which would be the next thing we may come back to for, in additional bus radios, as you can see, we're not quite the whole fleet.
The other thing I guess you mentioned, the state police have a program where you can write for grants, but you can only do them in November and then you have to spend it. So we're at a point where we really need the radios in this part up and running, but our intention was then, before that November deadline, we would write, have the plan together and write it and let's see how much money we can get that way before we come back and hit the general fund. If that can get us the rest of the antenna, get us some schools, or if we can write it over multiple years, we would do those things.
And our understanding is most school districts who have written for that have been successful, so it's probably, you know, a good gamble to wait and then ask for, see if we get the grant to cover the rest of that, or a good portion of it anyway. So yeah, the question is, that's our goal, Brad. We're not there yet, but all this equipment would convert to there.
Okay. And then also, just...
We can rent off of his antenna to do that now, but the cost was pretty large.
Okay.
So I think with our size, the goal would be to have our own antenna so we don't have to.
Okay. And I saw the discounts which were listed down here, and then I just happened to look on the webpage and you got the $1,200 for the two sets of 10 phones as your discount, but right on their webpage says you also get a $500 discount for when you buy that SLR 8,000 antenna. So I would ask you to ask them for a $500 if that applies.
We'll check on that. Sometimes when it's, and you wouldn't see this on their website, if it's off the state bid, which is already a reduced amount, you can't get that additional amount. Sometimes they've already, and I think you can see it, some machines lean into it, there was like a 30 percent state bid discount. And so sometimes they won't allow that, but certainly we'll check on that and make sure. Like I said, sometimes because of the state bid already being so much lower than what they list out to the public, you can't get that discount. But I'll check.
Okay.
All right. Are there, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Moving into three point two.
Three point two is, as we've talked before, as we've been doing a little bit better, is a purchase of another maintenance, or in this case, skilled trades vehicle. We're recommending the purchase of a 2018, it's a Ford Transit High cargo van that we use with skilled trades. It's the state bid. You'll see that it also has with it where they configured the back of the vehicle with, by the contractor. And that's one thing that our insurance companies are recommending more and more other than you going out and constructing your own backup vehicle. If something were to happen, that could be an issue. We also looked like we would on any state bid at the other main brand that you would think of. Chevrolet on the state bid did not make a high van, so that kind of rules it out for what we would use it for. And the Dodge that they had is a front-wheel drive. We do tow with this, generators, things like that. And so that wouldn't have met our capabilities. I guess the other thing is, you'll see it put in here, this will take a while to purchase. This was something that we talked about bringing to you last year, but it's one of those things they stopped making very early. So it's like, you have to have your bid in before September and then you have to wait while they only make so many. And that was the problem last year, that when we were going to put the bid in, it was like, there's nothing left in that. So I forget if the cutoff date's September, so we thought we should bring it to you now so that we can get it in before the making, and then, fingers crossed, we get it sometime yet this calendar year, but there's no guarantee. It's just a matter of they only make so many of these.
All right. I'll entertain a motion. I'm... For the purchase of the Ford Transit cargo van. All right. Support. All right. Mary, supported by Lynn. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Moving into three point three. This is a board resolution in support of the Dow Chemical Company's effort to consolidate its Midland, Michigan facilities into one unified site. At this time, I'm going to read the proposed resolution, and then after that, I will entertain a motion and we can have discussion. All right. This is a resolution recognizing the importance of our district to support the city of Midland's largest, most dynamic employer and community partner in its effort to consolidate its Midland, Michigan facilities into one unified site through a one-mile closure of South Saginaw Road between Mark Putnam and Salzburg Roads. Whereas Midland Public Schools is a proud contributor of the Midland, Michigan community, whereas Midland Public Schools prepares future generations to be productive members of society and provides the skills and knowledge necessary for an educated workforce that fuels our city, state, nation, and the world's workforce. Whereas Midland Public Schools recognizes the Dow Chemical Company as a tremendous ally, employer, and champion for the Midland community for 120 years. Whereas Midland Public Schools is sincerely appreciative of the generous, educationally-minded community and business partner the Dow Chemical Company has been to our district through the years. Whereas our district is proud to acknowledge that Midland Public Schools is a better and more vibrant public school district because of the partnership, contribution, and emphasis of the Dow Chemical Company. Whereas Midland Public Schools recognizes the essential need of a strong employment base for the parents of our children, of which the Dow Chemical Company plays a major role. Whereas Midland Public Schools acknowledges that there will be potentially minor inconveniences for Midland community travelers in the one-mile closure of South Saginaw Road, however, the extra measure of the safety and security for our community will be immeasurable. Whereas the contribution that the Dow Chemical Company will play in the future success of the Midland Public Schools and the entire Midland, Michigan community is vital. Therefore, be it resolved that the Midland Public Schools Board of Education does hereby affirm its support for the South Saginaw Road closure project to consolidate the Dow Chemical Company's Midland, Michigan facilities into one cohesive site. Dated the 17th day of July 2017. So at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Support.
Move by Brad, supported by Scott. At this time, I will open this up for discussion. Anyone like to voice their opinion?
I just, I like the fact that it's put in here that there is going to be some inconvenience in the closure of that road. I'm concerned about the opportunity for rescue vehicles and that sort of thing to get through unrestricted, and also the increased traffic to residential areas. That's my concern. But we put that in there and I do see the importance of Dow Chemical in Midland community and their need for wanting to have a secure operation, so.
Any other comments? I know from my standpoint, working in manufacturing myself, I understand the importance for them to have their whole facility on one site. It's, I mean, we run into this type of thing all the time. If you were starting from scratch, this may not be how you would do it, but we're not starting from scratch, and so that's, this is what they're looking at now, is a way to, you know, bring some efficiencies to their process and the safety and security of everyone who is working on that site.
Just having a road running through the facility has got to be a huge safety risk. And what I do with having large amounts of chemicals and chlorine, you don't want those types of things running through your facility at all hours of the night, so that's a huge relief to them, I'm sure, to get that taken care of if it's able to be done.
Let alone the government regulations that regulate how they can transport things across the street. Any other comments? All right. At this time, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The resolution passes. Moving into item four, request to address the board. Assuming there are no requests to address the board tonight. One of these times you're gonna speak, Roger. All right. Moving into five, which is facilities, finance, and operations. So Patrick, we had a meeting on July 10.
We did. We did a couple things that night. We, first of all, we visited the construction sites across the district. Myself, Angela, and Mary, I believe, with various administration and Burton Mallow employees, visited job sites, received tours. Central Auditorium, Central Park Elementary, Northeast Middle School, Plymouth Elementary, and Woodcrest Elementary. The second one, we discussed most of these already, but July purchases. Mr. Cooper shared information regarding the purchase of two items which were brought to tonight's meeting. The first was a purchase of a Ford Transit High Van. This van is replacing a 1985 Step Van with over 175,000 miles. It was chosen based on the high roof, rear-wheel drive, and ability to tow. The second purchase tonight was for the upgrading of the district's radio communication system. This purchase continues the radio system conversion to digital from analog. It will improve our radio coverage in the district, especially to the north, add GPS capacity, and add additional digital handheld units for our maintenance and technology departments. Further purchases in these areas will be needed to complete our buses and expand our radio communication capacity to the school building level with standardized systems, enhancing the district's ability to communicate in all situations. All purchases are budgeted general fund purchases. Next meeting is Monday, August 14 at 5 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have three gifts for information only. You don't have to act on them. They total $6,000. $4,000 for the band at Dow High School from the Music Boosters Club, and $1,000 to, through the Midland Area Community Foundation, the Dow Community Gives Program. $1,000 that's going to Dow High, student athletes, and another $1,000 is going to the Midland High Boys Golf Team.
Thank you to the community for their generous gifts. Moving into six, human resources.
Yes. We'd like to recognize that Susan Sue Haskie Lane passed away, a former MPS employee, on June 11, 2017. Mrs. Haskie was an elementary teacher at Longview Elementary for 32 years, retiring in 1994. We express our deepest sympathy to her family.
Thank you. All right. Item seven, correspondence to the Board of Education, to and from, you can read that in here. Eight is scheduled activities for information. Just note that our next regular board meeting will be August 21, 2017. And at this point, we will move into the study discussion section. I will start with you, Lynn.
Not a lot to say other than it's been fun to go by the buildings and see how they're changing, and went by Central, came back into town, and wow, I mean, it looks almost done. However, I keep getting people to ask me why the "I" isn't in build, so they think, you know, is it not supposed to be there? Are we waiting for it? Did something happen to it?
They haven't seen any other things.
No. No.
Yeah. And I'm not sure it's gonna be there much longer. The foundation, was it end of the month? I think it was. So I think the foundation supported that and throughout the community, so.
Yep. I told them you have to stand and be the "I," and they just kind of looked at me like, what? And I referenced my picture the other day. And then I, I guess they've been out of town, but reading, I think it was in your letter, Mike, I'm trying to get back in the groove here, just all the fun things that are going on at Midland High with the Chemick...
Yes. Challenge?
Chemick Challenge Program. I thought, wow, I'd like to go over and do some of those fun activities. So that's neat to have these opportunities in the summer. And other than that, I just hope everybody's having a good summer and taking some time for yourself.
I'd just like to say I think it's a great step forward in updating of the radios and I would highly encourage us to look for grants to further that and make it a more expedient process, if at all possible, to get those other buses, to get the schools, and/or to get the whole wave technology so that you have a complete mesh across the entire Midland Public Schools, which I think we really need to have that as part of the whole process of secure entrances and everything else to protect the children and wherever they are on the bus and the school, wherever they may be. And that technology can do that, and we just, we need to get there as quick as we can.
Thank you.
I don't have anything really to add to tonight's agenda other than what's already been said, so I'll leave it at that.
Mary?
Just wanted to say that it was really nice being part of FFO and getting a chance to visit the construction sites and know that those, I mean, they're really right on target, right on their plan, if not ahead of plan, and to make those secure entrances for all our buildings. It's really nice. And the improvements in the classrooms, amazing, amazing. So we'll be ready for the start of the school year.
Me, not much new, the construction. It is, I have full confidence it'll get done by the fall. I have no worries about that, but it is, when you see that, you realize how daunting that task is and how much was torn up in those buildings, classrooms, walls, entire walls. It's something to see, and kind of just had something else that slipped my mind. Man, I'm losing my brain here. I guess that's it, since I forgot what I was gonna say.
All right. Excellent. I just, well, I thoroughly enjoyed my tour of all the construction projects, and I also went up to Dow High myself to check that one out since we hadn't made it up there. The other thing I want to add, so sometime this week, or maybe it was last week, I just got to it last night, I got an email about the new volunteer signup system that we have going in for Midland Public Schools. So it was very easy to do. Linked in, put some information down, and I guess it'll take a week or so and they'll get back with me, and I think at that point, we have to submit some more information, but that's only because we're going for the Level Two to be able to drive kids, so. But it seemed like it was a very smooth process, so looking forward to seeing how that goes and thanking the community partners for partnering with us on that. So all right, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mike.
Well, off the construction thing, I think one of the amazing things that sometimes our residents don't realize right now is we nearly have every site getting some construction. And so we wanted to make sure you saw Northeast, even though it wasn't scheduled for there, we're pulling lockers ahead early to get that done, a need in that building. And then the secure entrances make us touch every building that's still open at this point in time. So pretty big management of that, and you met the team of Barton Mallow. It's now a team where it was two or three employees. I can't remember, I think there were five or six total, and then the architects were there as well. And so like Patrick said, they're pretty confident it's gonna be open. I think it's really easy to walk in those buildings and go, really? You know, at this point in time, they look pretty rough, but they're starting to make good progress out there. And Central Park is, we could open today. Everything's there. I saw some furniture coming out today, so I think maybe more of the furniture's arriving, so we're easily ready at Central Park to go. Few outdoor spaces, equipment's still arriving, but the bulk of everything's done at this point in time. I sent you in a Friday letter a little bit about four things that we're gonna work on, work on, study, and I think it's pretty important you know those because it could be, we could go there, we could not go there, but if we do, there's some pretty major change possible in there, right? And the idea of bringing Mandarin in is certainly a commitment to try to grow Mandarin, whether it be large enough, and so do we start at an elementary level and grow that want, need into the middle and high school. Where do we go from there? It also will affect our other world languages. As you know, we've struggled a little bit the last few years, offering all levels of all languages, and so we're gonna study that again, and you know, we haven't had much luck with kids crossing town to take those programs. And so do we need to look at a different way of doing that via blended or teacher crossing, or how we're gonna be able to keep those programs alive going forward? And it is our goal to keep all of them alive. It could, you know, could one day, they could wean themselves out, right? One of them, and then adding Mandarin could also do that. But we think Mandarin is a relevant one that we need to add at this point. I've talked to you guys before about, it was great to start the Young Forest program. It was good to start, excuse me, preschool four-year-old program and Young Fives. There's a goal to maybe start a preschool three. We applied for GSRP that could be down the road where we get a section, but we also took some room space for our elementaries, and that's some good idea when we thought we were gonna continue to decline at the elementary level, but we have stabilized, if not grown a tad, at the elementary levels, which is very good. In fact, Brian, agenda group, we had Brian bring up today, we were looking at the data again of how we're doing with students, Midland County or Midland Public School residents, and where do they choose to go to school. And that is pretty overwhelming that we are really doing well on that pro-ke, private, other public. We're doing very well on that trend going forward. So we're looking at these programs and saying, should we possibly use a section of carpers that's gonna stay open with robotics? And should we open an early childhood center? We probably need to pull those people who have chosen that now, even though they won't be the ones affecting to say, would that have changed your mind at all, like a business would do, to make sure you're not changing a model that takes you away from what you're already successful at? And so we'll look at that and make sure we look real careful of that going forward. Benefit of that would be clearing some space in our present elementaries and opening them up. It'd also allow us maybe to look at the placement and where we've put our highest need students. This feels sometimes like, again, when those programs were added, we found the most available rooms stuck it there. We didn't have this plan to start from, and now if we could start all over, how would we balance those classrooms and put them in the right buildings? Seibert maybe with, being the largest school prior to Central Park, and having multiple high-need programs, is that the right spot for it? And so we're trying to ease that maybe as we go forward. That would give us a chance. And then the easing to the north, Woodcrest, Seibert being our largest schools prior to Central Park, and potentially, at least what I'm seeing, you know, growth, maybe to continue to grow to the north, we may need to look at that rezoning plan, so we're gonna look at... look at what would that be at the elementary? We would not affect any students presently in the system. We would be looking at the slow transition of those students yet to come to us on where they may be zoned or not. And it would be a very small group. We're, you know, the idea would be to move 20, 40 seats out of Woodcrest-Seibert and free those up as we continue to grow to the north, or else we will face a much bigger problem out there where we could need a school to the north, something like that, going forward. Seibert was our final school to be IBPYP authorized. All of them are now authorized, so we are moving forward there. The trick as we go forward, and we really do believe STEM fits inside the IBPYP and moves along, but of course, there is a little balance there, and keeping one spinning strong and then adding the other one in is a balance, and there's some work to go forward. Opening day is always a big day for schools. I think Jerry used to say it, we get the refresh in schools. Not so surely true, that's true anymore. The summer pace is still pretty heavy, but you get that fresh new start like a new season, and opening day kind of kicks that off. We had a great opening day last year when we brought Kathy Nimmer in and her background and who she is and what she did there as Indiana Teacher of the Year was pretty powerful, so I said, I better get to work early because it's certainly not me up there being that dynamic and doing what she did that day. What is it we can find? And so we kind of worked, thought we had an idea, knew we needed to possibly raise some funds, working with Dow Chemical, and the person that Rob Valentin was trying to find fell through. So Rob kind of said, well, what is it you're interested in? You know, could we support you in some way? So we reached out to him and we were able to bring in another national speaker, and so you'll see Jamie Volmer, and you could read about him a little bit and what he does for education, and I think that'll be another good opening day for us. The last one I need to really talk about is Jefferson Pool. So we've talked about flood damage. I think the last board meeting I mentioned, we were still looking at the damage at Jefferson, which got hit the hardest, the pool. And today, Bob got some feedback from the adjusters and insurance company that most likely the Jefferson Pool will not be covered because of versus city backup or flood, and where did this come from? And so the damage is somewhere in the 200,000 to 300,000 range, and so we could very well be facing. If you think of all our pools, if you've been to Jefferson, it's a non-competition pool, so you can't swim events, it's not full length. We've settled along prior to me. Make sure you understand that we've been talking for a long time that our middle school pools, when they're done, they're probably done. Dow High will continue, and it's a good quality pool going forward. Most schools are getting out of the running school, community pools, the community and the schools partner and try to figure out how to do that going forward. I think that discussion's come a little faster with the damage to Jefferson, and we'll explore there, but that pool very well could be done. So we've got a little more studying to do and figure out where that's going, but just a heads up, the damage is significant, insurance is not going to be able to help us on that. And that's all I have for you tonight.
All right. Anything else? All right. Was that enough?
No.
Okay. So I turned this meeting at 7:33. Thank you all very much.